Let's call the meeting to order. Just as a reminder to everyone, if you'd like to speak before the council meeting, please complete a blue speaker card and turn it into the city clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Rigby.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lormore. Mayor Tassari.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Dennis Morales of the Cavalry Chapel, Eastvale.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. And we thank you so much, Lord, for our city. We thank you for the great things that you're doing in and through our city, Lord, through our city council and city staff, Lord. And we just ask, Lord, to have your hand upon them, continue to grant them wisdom and guidance as they make difficult decisions for our city. We thank you, Lord, for our long enforcement present here today. Our first responders, Lord, continue to keep them safe, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for our community members here. Lord, just continue to have your hand upon their homes, guide them. And we left up this meeting to you. I just pray, Lord, that you may just allow this meeting just to be a time to refurbish intent, Lord, and bring unity, Lord. Will you remember this time, Lord, those areas of the world where there were people screaming about natural disaster? Just continue to have your hand upon them and protect the families, Lord. May you just bring restoration to these areas. We thank you and you praise the Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman DeCosta from the Public Safety Commission was unable to be here, so we'll move on to item 3.2, introduction of our Eastvale Traffic and Special Enforcement Team.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff and members of the community. As you know, the Sheriff's Department employs just under 4,000 employees and provides service to the jails, to the courts, to the coroner's bureau and patrol operations within our unincorporated and our 17 contract city partners, which also includes the city of Eastvale. As you can imagine, we have a lot of movement of all our staff, sometimes to the needs of the department, promotions as such, or sometimes to the personal needs of the employee. Eastvale has not been the exception, and we have lost or transferred several of our personnel over the last few months. Therefore, we thought it would be nice to reintroduce you to our staff that are dedicated to the city of Norco in addition to our patrol staff and reassure that we have selected the best of the bunch at the Hoopa Station. I believe you already know Assistant Chief of Police Tim Martin, who was standing in the back. But I would like to also introduce, starting with our traffic bureau. The team is responsible for traffic enforcement as well as education with the goal of reducing traffic collisions and making every resident and visitor safe within the community. As an example, since the beginning of the year, this traffic team has conducted 28 grant-funded traffic operations, including DUI checkpoints, distracted driver and pedestrian safety operation, and has issued over 3,000 citations for movie violations. I would like to introduce you to your traffic team, starting with Sergeant Justin Rowan, Deputy Michelle Shamhart, Deputy Dacia Medina, Community Service Officer Luann Coffey, and Community Service Officer Daryl Newman. And some of you probably know him more than others, unfortunately, but our motor officer, Paul Launther. And now I'd like to introduce you to our special enforcement team. This team is responsible for mitigating crime and evaluating and solving quality of life issues that affect the community. As an example, since the beginning of the year, this team has conducted numerous operations, including undercover operations for theft and burglaries within the residential neighborhoods and shopping centers, and have investigated and shut down, as you've probably read in the paper, numerous marijuana growhouses. One of our team members, Deputy James Harrington, was unable to be here today, but we have his partner, Deputy Kylie Hanson. Altogether, these men and women have a combined over 120 years of service, and I would like to let you know that I'm very proud of them and they're very proud to serve your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. We are too.[348.58][348.58][applause] All right, we'll move on to our student liaison report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Eastvale Elementary A-Track conferences started Monday, September 25th, and will continue throughout the week. A-Track Awards Assembly for grades Kinder through six will be on Thursday, September 28th. It will track off as well on minimum day. D-Track will be returning on Monday, October 2nd. Eastvale Elementary's entire staff will attend the district's S-Day on Friday. PTA has also been currently providing art to all the classes through Art Smart, along with the students reading about our national parks. There will be a mobile dairy classroom on October 9th for all students to share. Rosa Parks Elementary celebrated Grandparents' Day today for Tracks A and B. Their annual Walk to School Day will be on October 4th, and on October 9th and 10th, 4th grade will be having a world kindness conference. Tracks C, D, and T will be having their grandparents' day on October 11th. October 19th marks the first day of parent conference meetings. Clara Barton Elementary Annual Harvest Festival will be on October 20th. Students will have had the opportunity to have pizza for lunch with the principal. This Friday, September 29th, Family Night at Angel Stadium will be open to Clara Barton's families. There is no school for students on Friday, September 29th. Teachers from River Heights Corona Fundamental and Norco Intermediate will join Ramire's staff to learn from a guest speaker on creating positive environments for students on each campus. Mark your calendars for November 6th. This is the date the game of the century, where the Ramires Intermediate basketball team will fight for the Eastvale School Trophy against River Heights Intermediate. This game will be at the Roosevelt Gym. Girls' game will be at 4:00 p.m. and boys at 5:00 p.m. Eleanor Roosevelt invites you to their first annual Relay for Life. We will walk around the quad in honor of those who have been affected by breast cancer. The relay will be on October 6th from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m., providing live entertainment, food vendors, spiritware and more with an entry of only $5 and free for students with ASB. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Oscar? All right, thank you, Oscar. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to public comments. As I said before, if anybody wants to speak, please turn in a speaker card to the city clerk. Just remember that you can address any item you want, but we're only going to be able to respond to items that are actually agendized. If you have anything negative or positive, please direct it at us and not staff. Thank you. We have any speaker cards?
Yes, we received the first public comment card from Gary Lewis.
Yes, sir.
I, Mayor and councilmembers and all persons of the county, like to introduce, we are the Norco Pagans. I'm Gary Lewis and my wife, Arlene. We have three members here to represent multiple cities. In fact, they just competed Saturday, and for some of them, their second event in four days. So we're very community-oriented, and what our desire for the girls are that they become more emotionally and socially developed, that they have a willingness to help others. And closely tied to that is altruism, developing different sets of strikes, having a passion and having fun. And now I'm going to introduce the girls, or you can introduce yourself. We'll start down here with the girls, see? And she is our genius princess. Go ahead, Kylie.
My name is Kylie. I'm just Norco pretty queen, and I also represent Eastvale. I'm excited to be representing not just Norco, but Eastvale as well.
Hi, I'm Miranda Rogers, and I'm a recent Norco junior chief.
Thank you very much. And although our introduction and speech is rather short, our commitment to the communities that we make contact with will be very lengthy. We have close contacts with Better Mile Club, Heverman Ridge, Formed Life Services, many organizations in Riverside, Anaheim, Orange County and Los Angeles County. So although these are Norco Pagans, we reach out to multiple communities in many ways. We're looking forward to having you invite us to a couple grand openings or events. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations.[662.82][662.82][applause]
We look forward to seeing you here in the future. Any other speaker cards?
Yes, our second public comment card was received from Ike Bootsma.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Councilor Barrett. I just have a request. I know the land on Helman is owned by Orange County Club, but the leaves are getting so tall that they're taller than the sign that says no park. So I just was wondering if there's any way we could contact Orange County Club and use the property. It really looks bad, and I think if the safety hazard falls, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just for clarification, is that on the west side of Helman there?
Yes, it's on our side.
Then it'd be on the east side, so on our side there?
It's on the east side where the barriers are taken down.
One of the things that I've noticed in the community lately is not everyone is familiar, and this is good for the public to know, not everyone's familiar with the East Citizen app. If you have not downloaded that, I strongly recommend that you do download that. That's a great app that you can have on your phone to be able to submit requests such as this, and it helps the city to be able to track and to be able to send those to the proper authorities to be able to take care of that. So if that, Mr. Bootsma, if you have not done that, as I'm sure you have, but we will follow up and we'll see if staff can follow up on that. Well, thank you.
Yeah, and the app will speed up the process of correcting whatever's sent in as well. Thank you, sir. Any other?
Yes, our last form is received by Sam Askander.
Good evening. We're here with a complaint, and has been made of a neighbor that the whole city is talking about. And he goes by the doorman, and he should argue, you know, goes with the doorman, and he's causing a lot of disturbance and a lot of talk in the city. And we recently had to be involved, unfortunately, with the situation with our daughter, and he has disturbed our family, and we had conversations with him, with his father and the legal board as well, and more so. I am part of a member of Crime Watch on reporting, and lots of people are talking and sympathizing, but no one is able to explain today. He harassed another neighbor of ours, and it was, he reported it on the Crime Watch on reporting site, and to the point that he had to get his gun out and tell them to get out of here for us. I don't know what the city can do about this, but we are seeing this thing happen. We called the police, we called 911 because he harassed our daughter at our driveway in the evening and scared her. And it was not the first time. So he does trespass, he does come to people's properties and harass them, not just at Albertson's or Starbucks or in the streets. And his parents and grandparents, they talked about him harassing them and their grandkids. So we're seeing happen.
Thank you for taking our call. We live in East Citizen's office, and we have not got problems before. This gentleman moved here to Eastville for a year now, and he has criminal records. He's been checking the public, and that's why police were actually coming, called the police. Officer two came over and indicated to us he's a trouble person. He's been wanting to get him out of the house again. But the problem was, he goes everywhere. He came to my property, my daughter called to scare her out, and she had to leave our home and to call us up. We called the police, and he said he's almost lost her. Also, as my wife mentioned, that we, their fear, my daughter's scared, there is a fear around him when he walks around, and not because of him personally, but because of what he can do. And there's many actually people offering that information on his behavior. And we're looking to do like a Crime Watch group, and we're looking also for more enforcement in the area. We live in this neighborhood between Cheltenham and Riverdale.
Thank you guys very much, and please pass on any information you have on to our city staff, and we'll see what course of action we can be taken and how it can be addressed. Okay? Thank you. Last card.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, folks. Move on to the consent calendar. Just a reminder, all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved in one motion unless they're pulled by a staff or a council member, or a member of the public can request a separate asking on a specific item. Do we have any requests?
We've had no requests.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item 614 for further discussion, please.
We have a request.
In addition to that, I need to register an abstention on item 64, I think, and I'd also like to pull item 6.10, which is the economic development. I'm sorry, that was 6.3. I need to register an abstention on, yeah. I just need to abstain on 6.3, but I'd like to pull 610.
Okay, so we'll pull 610 and 614. Can I get a motion on approval of the rest of the items?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lormore.
Aye.
Mayor Tassari.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Go ahead and move to 610, Renew Contract for Economic Development Consultant Services. Could we just have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. This item before you this evening is a proposal to renew the economic development contract with Econ Solutions, which is part of HDL. This, in May of 2013, the Eastvale City Council adopted a strategic plan that set out a blueprint, if you will, for the next several years. And that was to provide a solid foundation for economic development and plot a course for the development of the city over the next several years. Some of the main objectives of the strategic plan were, number one, to establish a solid fiscal foundation; two, to optimize the city's economic development potential; three, maintain an excellent level of public safety; and four, to provide high-quality public facilities and infrastructure. The main goal of economic development is improving the economic well-being of the community through efforts that entail job creation, job retention, business attraction, marketing, tax-based enhancements and quality of life. The city has many projects currently under development and several projects that are in the planning phases. There's also a lot of projects that are on the borders of the city that will have an impact on ultimately our future. Although they are not economic development for us, and they're not projects that will create a sales tax generation specific to us, they are something that needs to be taken into consideration in the larger picture. Based upon feedback during the budget workshop last year, the council had suggested a more aggressive and driving approach towards economic development and to utilize the services of a consultant to supplement the existing staff efforts. The following items, in this new proposal, these are following items that would be developed as part of the renewal for this contract. Item number one was the Economic Development Action Plan, which, if you recall, at the presentation, the joint workshop between the Planning Commission and the city council, city council members gave direction to HDL to develop an Economic Development Action Plan. So that is part of this new proposal, and that is something that we are, with the approval of this proposal, will be taking to the Economic Development Committee in about two weeks. The community profile update, that's an item that is regularly updated every six months from HDL, excuse me, from Econ Solutions, that goes over a description of the city demographics, some light demographics, population numbers, major employers, workforce development information. Item number three is much more extensive. It's the insight market analytics. That is known in economic development as a gap analysis or leakage report. That's a document that is critical in economic development and business attraction. We provide that to numerous prospects that come into City Hall for retail purposes. It demonstrates where our market is weak and where there are opportunities for specific retailers. The last item is, part of this proposal, is a business retention, expansion and attraction. This is getting into kind of another phase of economic development, which is Business Visitation Program. It also includes Business Roundtable Lunch Program, which we have one currently in the pipeline for foreign trade zones. It also includes a quarterly e-newsletter related specifically to economic development and projects that are coming down the pipe and recent openings. This is targeted to brokers, site selectors and chamber members, and of course, the community at large. I would also like to see a community forum as part of this proposal. This is something that was done in the city of Atherton. You can watch it on YouTube if you're interested. It's very insightful, but it's more of an education and outreach tool for the citizens to understand what is economic development. And unlike the joint workshop that we had before, this involves more of a panel of industry experts that talk about the trends of local economic development, not on a regional perspective, but more localized, and allows the citizens to kind of learn and ask questions. And then obviously, business attraction efforts, which includes assisting us at ICSC and other marketing initiatives. The city manager's office, the budget, does have, again, a line item of $100,000 for economic development for ongoing efforts during the term of the agreement. The proposal is not to exceed $60,000 for consultant services during the course of the budget year. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I could work a mic. Thank you. Appreciate that. A couple of questions. With the exception of item number one, I'm curious to get a little bit more information on what the tangible products are going to be, and specifically on item four, it's the largest dollar amount, and it seems to be on a retainer basis. What are we getting out of this, and moreover, what are the measurable results that are going to be coming from item number four? How are we going to make sure that this money's being put to good use? What are we measuring? What are the positive outcomes that are going to come from spending this money? You know, how are we making sure if we want to continue to renew this year over year, you know, that we're actually getting our money's worth? And then, second or third question, I didn't see any type of agreement associated with this. Are we going to have our standard professional services agreement? Is this on call? How are we structuring the deal here?
Okay, thank you for those questions. So to answer your first question, you wanted to know about item number one?
No, with the, I understand the deliverable of item number one, it's that economic development plan, but are these items coming in a report? Are we going to see that report? Is that just at the staff level? You know, what is the product that's going to result from completing item number two? Item number three, I think I have a better understanding now since your staff report, but what is that, physically, what is that going to entail? Who's that going to? Is that something that's going to be continually updated? And then more, just what are the metrics associated with item number four, if you could?
Okay, so item number one is, would be in a report form. That is something that we want to run by the Economic Development Committee first for their input, so the consultant would be providing a presentation to the members of the Economic Development Committee, and they would be offering feedback and recommendations that would then go on to the city council and be discussed here at a council meeting with a copy of the report. So that plan does have presumably components inside of it that are, again, a more developed step-by-step process for guiding future development, for guiding some of the projects that we currently have on the books, you know, the LEO specific plan, the build-out of Goodman Commerce Center, you know, Walmart, other items. So that, it will be a report that will go to the council ultimately for direction, additional input and direction. The community profile is very critical to, items number two and three, they're updated every six months. That includes additional demographics. It includes a more getting into the weeds, for example, on market areas. So we have several identified market areas such as Cantu Galiano and Hamner, Eastvale Gateway, and so the analytics and the data that goes with that is everything from drive times to population, median household income, you know, retailers, leakage, sales that are, leakage of sales that are leaving the city and going to another area, but the originator is within our zip code. So it looks at one-mile, three-mile, five-mile radiuses, and so it's very, very, it's a very large document with a tremendous amount of data. And site selectors like to see this information to make sure that there is, there's a market for them. Item number four, business retention, expansion and attraction, is very time-consuming. That is something that we haven't done in the last year. Although I have ongoing conversations with local businesses, you know, Shamrock Foods, Granger, Walmart, several of our larger employers, a true business retention program involves actually going to the site, having a meeting with them, you know, there's a whole questionnaire. You ask them about future growth, how many employees they have, what their You ask them about future growth, how many employees they have, what their plans are for future growth, are they having problems? You know, are there things that we can help them with to overcome some of the struggles that they're encountering? Maybe they need assistance with workforce development. Maybe it's something as simple as an incident we had with Shamrock Foods and the construction that was up in that area that was impacting their ability to move goods in and out of their location. So all of these things, it's very relationship-based for your business visitation program. Ideally, we should be visiting on a monthly basis. It depends on how often we want to do this, but at minimum, one to two days a month, we should be spending that time visiting with our larger employers. It is much more challenging to replace someone that has left than to make sure they're well taken care of on the front end and that they never leave. A perfect example of this would be Mary Kay Cosmetics. They weren't ever in our city, but it's a classic story in the economic development world of a business retention program gone bad, where they left and there was absolutely no indication to the jurisdiction because there had been no relationship. And so that's a major loss of sales tax generation, major loss of workforce. And so business retention and visitation is a critical component of an economic development program. The Business Roundtable, that is, I think that's, again, it's a relationship-building tool. This is for our brokers, it's for our developers, and it's for prospects. So at this time, our humble, ongoing economic development team includes myself, Eric Norris, Joe Indrawan, and Mr. Kavanaugh. When it starts to get into negotiations and contracts, we bring in Mr. Kavanaugh for his expertise and guidance. We have ongoing efforts with Public Works because that's part of the development process, understanding infrastructure. And of course, Eric and his team, when it comes to the elements of the plan, conditions, use permits, all of the details of the planning process. But these roundtable lunches are geared more towards, sometimes there's tools in economic development that you can bring to bear to a project or a prospect that turns their desire to come to your city from, you know, lukewarm to where can I sign? Foreign trade zones, as I had mentioned, is what, that's one project, one luncheon I would like to hold next month. Those are very complicated, but there's a significant financial benefit to having a tenant that can take advantage of a foreign trade zone, to actually utilize it. Perfect example is Skechers in Moreno Valley saves $1.5 million a year by utilizing their foreign trade zone. And it's the same trade zone that we have, but this is an economic advantage to Eastvale because we're in Western Riverside County. You go into the City of Ontario, that's not going to be the case. So I would like our brokers and our developers to have enough knowledge to be able to partner with the city and explain to some of these prospects why coming to the City of Eastvale is the place to be versus going right across the street where they will not have these economic advantages. But again, it requires an education process. The quarterly newsletter, again, we have so many wonderful things going on here in the City of Eastvale, so many great projects, so many store openings, that I'd like to try to build on that momentum and that excitement and, you know, kind of shout from the rooftops everything that we've got going on, projects that are coming down the pipeline, and just keep that buzz and that enthusiasm and the momentum going, and that starts to attract more of the same. And Community Forum, again, we'd be looking at numbers of attendance as a metric, feedback from your constituents. It seemed to go over quite well in the City of, I believe it was Atherton, where HDL held this Community Forum before as part of their contract with Econ Solutions, and it was very well-received. And, you know, having the citizens' support and education in the economic development process is really critical and helps support your policy decisions and staff implementation. And lastly, of course, Business Attraction. We have been doing that on an on-and-off basis over the last couple of years, going to ICSC, Las Vegas, San Diego. I know former Mayor Ike Butzma has participated in attending ICSC with us before. And so having, reaching the decision-makers and getting appointments at ICSC can be a month-long process. You really need to start three to four months out and start targeting your list of prospects that you would like to see. And it's, again, it's just very, very time-consuming. This particular consultant has a lot of connections. This isn't the first time that we've utilized the services of a consultant to secure meetings at ICSC. And this time around, we're, next week, there's ICSC in Los Angeles, which I will be attending in somewhat of a different format in that the two different developers have asked me to participate in the meetings that they have secured. So I'll be going as backup to tell everyone about Eastvale.
Can I answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
And I believe, our consultant is here to answer any questions. Our consultant is Barry Foster with Econ Solutions, which is HDL. They also provide us services and sales tax data, which is, it's nice to have those two components under the same roof as well as property tax information.
I think you provided a lot of outstanding information. It's a lot to absorb. My, I have one word answer question. Are we getting our money's worth?
I believe so, yes. And I think it's going to become even more critical as these projects come online. Previously, this last year, you know, we didn't have the expertise to run a market analytics report. That requires software that we don't have, and to purchase just that piece of something is several thousand dollars. And same thing with the Community Profile. Again, those components priced individually is very expensive. Mr. Foster has already participated in several of our economic development meetings that we've had with prospective tenants at City Hall. He's been instrumental in bringing Miguel's to the Eastvale marketplace, to smoothing out some of the negotiations that we've had with other prospective tenants that are not liberty to state at this time. And he's constantly attending different types of ICSC and different types of conferences all around California and the United States. And because we are a client, we are always in the forefront of his mind on what can come to Eastvale. So, but he's here to answer any additional questions.
Anybody have anything? Do we have any comment cards?
We have none.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we'll move on to 614, the Eastvale Crime Statistics Report.
I just had a couple of questions. I don't think that we need a full staff report on that. Just curious on, I know this was presented to Public Safety last night, and I am just curious on what their feedback was.
So last night when we presented the Eastvale Crime Statistics Report, Commissioner Ward asked that staff in the Sheriff's Department look into adding, or looking into possibly adding, the number of citations. I think that was previously recommended, and I think that he mentioned something about maybe geographically isolating them or showing the site number of citations per geographic location is what his request was.
I would agree with that request. I know you guys have put in a great amount of time and effort, and I think this is great. I'm very excited for this. But I would agree with that if we could look into adding moving violations. I don't know right now that we need to do it geographically. I think if we were just to be able to do it as a city, a couple of reasons for that. I think it shows that our deputies are out there working, that they're out there being proactive as they are. And the other thing with that is, is I think it will help us to see that if we see crimes start to go up and we see traffic violations start to go down, it'll help us in realizing that we need more hours, more deputy hours out there. So it'll help us in justifying our additional need for additional officers.
I have one quick question. Did you say that, sorry, Leah, was that, they have been traffic citation reports and others such, wasn't that already recommended, correct, previously?
The number of citations and moving violations was recommended, and we did discuss it kind of...
And this is...
Via email between the City Manager, Councilmember Rigby, Captain Hedge, Lieutenant Martin, and myself.
Okay. Well, then I kind of, you know, echo what Councilman Rigby is saying, is that we would like to see that as well. Continue to see that.
Understood. We'll work with Lieutenant Martin and Captain Hedge to bring forth those numbers for you.
Thank you.
Second?
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. That ends the consent calendar. Before we move on to item seven, yes?
Mayor Tesari, just for a point of clarification for staff, it is not necessary to see that information broken down into GIS layers. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because this has been, there's been a lot of back and forth and back and forth, and I want to make sure we get it right and that we don't continue to add, this is going to become this big giant report. So I'm trying to make sure we capture what is truly necessary and what you want to see. And hopefully then just provide that information on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that. I don't think it's necessary to have it broken down by geographic layers or however the Sheriff's Department does it. I think we do it together as a city. If the time comes, a year or two from now, that we realize we are seeing traffic patterns in specific areas that we need to break that down, maybe we can revisit it then. But I think as of now, this is, this is a great statistical information page, and I think the thing that'll just make it on top is just adding moving violations for the entire city together. And once again, that's just moving violations. That's not, we aren't concerned about parking citations, street sweeping, any of that stuff.
And then just to break that down further, the number of moving violations, I assume you would like to see that month-over-month, similar to some of the data? Or in the bottom-left-hand corner, you have, for example, total calls for service year-to-date? Do you want to see it in that format, or do you want to see it month-over-month?
I think the month-over-month.
Okay. I think we are clear now.
Thank you.
Do we need to just...
No, that's fine. They just want clarification. All right. As I was saying, before we move on to public hearings, I just wanted to take one item out of council business, 8.1, the Public Safety Commission appointment. Can we go ahead and get that one out of the way so they don't have to sit here all night?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you recognizing that. Over the past month or so, there's been a Public Safety Commission appointment that has opened, since Seber, we missed, who's out in Texas now enjoying our life out there and making changes over there. So we had five, five applications and interviewed all five. All were well, they were great candidates. Obviously, one can only be accepted. And so through that process, we have Christian Dinko, who will be our new Public Safety Commissioner. And so I'll just read a real quick bio. If you want to stand, kind of present something, come to the front. I'll read your bio real quick. So Christian Dinko and his wife Judith have been residents of Eastvale for 10 years. They have four children, Savannah, who's an 18-year-old and a senior, Delaney is 15 and a sophomore, who both attend Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and Connor, who's 12, and Brady, who's nine, who are both in elementary school. Christian holds a bachelor's degree from Cal Baptist University in Leadership and Public Administration, and has been in law enforcement for over 25 years. He is currently a lieutenant with Riverside Police Department supervising aviation, SWAT, parole and corrections team, hostage negotiations team, and a newly-formed UAV program. He has previously worked as a detective in investigations, narcotics, auto theft, property crimes, SWAT, major investigations, Community Service Bureau, and press information officer. He has been the president of Eastvale Little League for the last five years and is an active coach in the league as well. He is also a youth soccer coach with Empire Soccer and Friday Night Lights Youth Flag Football, and has also previously coached with Eastvale's Pop Warner Football Program. Christian is dedicated to the community service and is looking forward to contributing to our great city of Eastvale. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
All right. Welcome aboard. And then Mr. Aguilar is going to probably have you go to the front here of the podium and get you sworn in.
If I could raise your right hand, repeat after me, I, say your name.
I, Christian Dinko.
Do you solemnly swear to support and defend...
Do you solemnly swear to support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
From all enemies, born and domestic?
From all enemies, born and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to?
Upon which I am about to.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, Commissioner Dinko. All right. All right, we're going to move on to item seven, public hearings. This time, we'll conduct two public hearing items. Joe Indrawan?
Good evening, Underlord Mayor.
Excuse, I'm going to have to...
Mayor Protem is going to recuse himself on this one.
7.1, yeah.
Good evening, Underlord Mayor and City Councilmembers. Before I present the item tonight, I have invited, actually, we have invited Mr. Chris Gray, Director of Transportation of WRC, who has been working on this project and to do presentation to the council tonight. Chris?
Members of the council, this is Joe Stenhouse, Chris Gray, the Director of Transportation for the Western Riverside House of Government. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here to talk to you about our TUMP program, bringing the TUMP ordinance to you. As a point of information, while the next study in the TUMP program is endorsed by the WRC, we rely on cities to adopt the I ordinance, where it may be decided to be declared. Some free work you're doing, your residence, the TUMP is a... It's derived from the Henry Sales Tax measure. It's intended to provide a funding for a tuition program. Benefits of the TUMP are guaranteed, and it fills out that. Oftentimes, TUMP is used sometimes in planning hearing work. It is... Oftentimes, TUMP is used sometimes for planning a hearing work. It is oftentimes leveraged with other funding and it is also a requirement to receive your Measure A local surges in road dollars, which is worth several million dollars a city on a annual basis. Just some examples of some of the projects, like Chandler Avenue, the town pay for a safety portion of the Cantor-Aliano interchange. And then we have two projects, major projects in the state that result from credit agreements. Either projects built by developers who change their TUMP obligations, Slicing Road and Chandler Avenue. In case you're curious, one of the points you'd like to share with everyone is TUMP is a regional program. Reason being is that urgent people actually live and work in the same city. So for that, in your case, roughly a third of your residents are working in San Bernardino County. Where your base is another third are working in Riverside County and the remainder travel to other areas of Southern California. So a couple of things you want to highlight is the WRCOG is simply the program administrator. Most of the major cities of the TUMP program are made at the jurisdiction or the, we have groups of jurisdiction, toll zones. So it says you are collecting fees, you're managing fees at WRCOG, you're working with the cities to identify the projects to prioritize. The next study, you've been required to update, you've adopted a next study, has a list of projects, has a fee schedule. The next study wasn't an extensive process involving a significant amount of outreach to various folks. And also related to the last update of the next study because of the passage of the S90, S132. Here is the fee schedule, a couple items to note. We're claiming the tuition may increase in single-family residential. If the payment goes down slightly, the industrial goes up slightly. We did a $3 per production retail fee based on feedback from our city managers and elected officials. And in modest amounts, it's not so realistic. So the next step is we're asking the city to adopt TUMP ordinance. Majority of cities have done so. We have about 400 jurisdictions remaining. And then I also wanted to let you know you're meeting with Joe and Paulie Burkschab, and I'll talk to him for it. And what we would like to talk to your city about, we have some additional funding coming. We'd like to fund some projects in the city of Eastville. We'd like the city to prioritize some projects for funding. You see, there's portions of Limoneite, or Paul, and Chandler Avenue that are local TUMP funding. And we do have some additional funding. We'd like to direct that to the city. We'd like to be with Joe and his staff and I'll talk to him for it. So we just wanted to make you aware of that and also a number of your developers that have come to us about, again, building in New, a company, we allow, I see a number of those developers on the way. And so with that, members of the council, thank you for your attention. I have a question for you there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I have a quick question. Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. So currently looking at the TUMP schedule, do we not have, we don't have any ordinance? We aren't paying anything towards that right now?
No, you aren't. You've adopted the ordinance when you incorporated. So you are adopting.
Revising it, right? So what are we currently, it has on here, it has effective date of ordinance, June 30th, 2019. Do we, do we have the current rates that we're paying, what it's jumping to?
Yeah, I can tell you what they are. The single-family residential is the same. The multi-family is a couple of dollars higher. The industrial is a dollar seventy-three. The retail was ten forty-nine, so that's going down significantly and service is going up about ten percent. The office is up.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Platt. This kind of question is for the benefit of the public because I, I've gotten this question a couple of times. I just want to make sure that it's clear. In, in the TUMP fees, obviously the, the fees are paid for by the developers that want to develop. Is that is correct?
Correct.
Is there any, or I guess, direct or indirect way that either retailers, homeowners actually end up flipping indirectly those costs?
In a sense, yes or no, it depends on the project. So if you're a developer and you, you are paying on average about $15,000 in fees every time you pull a building, that is in addition to the costs you're paying for materials, labor, land, and the like. So the fees represented for most projects contribute about five to 10 percent of the total cost of the project. So in a sense, you're paying for it. What we would point out is that in many cases, if you don't pay for it through a TUMP fee, you would be paying for those improvements some other way, whether it's a community facilities district.
CFD.
A CFD, a parcel tax. So in those, one of our efforts recently was to do a study of comprehensive development. We found in cases that in San Bernardino County, they don't pay a TUMP fee per se, but they collect other fees that pay for much of the same infrastructure, so you end up paying more than that.
And those CFDs, if they are going to pass that through a CFD, that's really dictated by the developer at that point, correct? And so as of right now, you're saying for single-family residential, which is not everybody, predominantly though the majority of Eastville residents, which I bring, that's why I bring up this concern, as of right now, it's staying the same up until next year or, sorry, two years from now? Okay. Actually, that was actually a benefit for me because I had better understood that, so.
If I may jump in here for a moment. So this is on new projects. This doesn't go retroactively, which I, I want to, want to make that point kind of for the benefit of the public. But some of these, these fees, for example, the, the retail component was very critical because that does translate into price per square foot on lease rates. So obviously, we pass on, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the original proposal on the retail component was to go up almost $6 a square foot. So we would have been charging developers $16 and change per square foot, which they obviously pass, pass on in their lease rates to, to the end user. So it doesn't come out of the taxpayers' dollars or, you know, the, the residents' pockets per se, but it does make it more difficult from an economic development standpoint to remain competitive with other jurisdictions that don't have similar fee structures, but maybe charging fees in another method.
So, but I want to be really clear for that point. It's a one-time fee that you pay when a building is built.
Correct.
If you're an existing homeowner, you may not pay this fee, but you pay a half-cent sales tax if those are.
And that's, that's to the Measure A?
Yes.
Yeah, I, that was actually my second question. Thank you for answering. Again, that was another, I thought I knew the answer to it. I just wanted to, so Michelle, thank you for bringing that up. But that was the other question I had that a lot of people had asked me about. And I, I didn't have the answer. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, so.
It's a great question and I, I think it's a, a very important point to clarify.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Councilman Rigby.
So I think on that too, I mean, that, that sounds absolutely right that, I mean, it, it doesn't necessarily get passed on to the resident. But when you look at the residential side, that will get passed on to the resident. So you look at the increase from 2019 to 2020, there's a slight increase there. You look at 2020, July 1st, 2020, there's an increase there. That portion does scare me a little bit because we already have developers coming to us saying, "I can't develop the land because you're increasing fees." So we are seeing that already. So that does, well, we're not, but, but our, our providers within the city are. Some of the other service providers have been.
And if I, if I may, there are a lot of fees that are charged to developers that we have zero control over. A perfect example is some of the fees that are charged by Eurupa Community Services District to get a meter connected. We have nothing to do, they're, they're pass, they're, well, TUMP is a pass-through fee, but JCSD collects their own fees directly. That, that's been a substantial increase of approximately 60% over the last several years. Then you have the school district that charges their fee, price per square foot, to pay for our schools. You have MSHCP, RBBD, these are all fees that, that we are required to charge and then pass through to the other jurisdictions. As far as the city of Eastville goes, you know, we independently charge a development impact fee and of cour, of course, when they're coming in and pulling permits, we charge for the permits and that's, that's it. Everything else is our fees that are, are charged by other jurisdictions of which we are a member agency.
Councilman Rush.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't think it's an issue of who charges the fee or what pot of money goes into it. It's the cumulative aspect. There were, as, as Chris and Michelle stated, there was a lot of, a lot of discussion in committees at WRCOG. There was a lot of industry folks that came and spoke against it, specifically on the retail fee when it was proposed to be much higher and I'm glad to see that it has gone down. I did not support the increase just from that cumulative aspect and I understand we, you know, there are things that need to be built and, and the cost of everything keeps going up. But whether it's JCSD or school fees or the two new gas taxes or whatever, it's this cumulative aspect that's making it more and more difficult to get a stick in the ground, to open up a business. And, you know, from my perspective, it's, okay, it's only a $273 per unit fee for single-family residential at a one-time, but that on top of everything, where is that, is that balance and where is that breaking point? I don't know what it is. I'm curious, do we know what the median home price is right now in the city? I've heard 456. Do you know?
It's, actually, it's.
Five.
It's.
Yeah. I got, I got so many realtors in the room here.
According to the.
Do we need a realtor?
According to the report that I received today from HDL, the aver, the median sales price of a detached, single-family residential home in Eastville from January of 2017 to August of 2017 is $546,500. That's a 7.2% increase in valuation.
So you have this, thank you for that, you have this odd juxtaposition, in my opinion, of prices going up and continually rising, which I think, you know, means a lot of things. Is there high demand and short supply? Is there just the, the aspect of our region and how great it is? I mean, all those different factors. I'm just concerned that we're, we're heading towards the precipice of, of this financial cliff and, you know, especially right now, we're coming on the heels of a substantial increase in, in water fees. And, and Chris, could you maybe give a, a quick synopsis of when you did the fee comparison studies? Weren't water fees the highest within the region?
Yes, the water fees were the single highest line item. So the single-family house, depending on the water district, you might pay 15, 20 plus thousand dollars. So out of that narrative, 45,000 dollars a fee, the water is the single biggest line item. School fees are sometimes the second or depending on the city, it's the city fee, TUMP.
Yeah. And, and there was the school bond that passed last November, which was supposed to solve everything and now a lot of, some school districts, I'm, I'm working on a project in the city of Menifee, they're looking to, you know, double and quadruple their fees. So anyways, just, just my two cents for, for what it's worth.
Councilmember Platt. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said I had no further questions, but I lied. I actually do. Can you, can you go again with the square footage for industrial retail service, Class A and B, for what we're paying right now?
So I want to be really clear about this. Right now, you are a participant in the TUMP program. Better participants is the beginning. We're asking you to adopt a new fee schedule. And let me just add, if you don't adopt a new fee schedule, then you're not in the program. So just I want to make sure I understand that. The benefit is that we're asking you to adopt a new fee program.
So that may wind up like.
The industrial fee is $1.73.
God.
The retail fee was $10.49. It's coming down to $1. The service fee was about 41. I'm sorry, about 43. So it's going up roughly.
Twenty-six cents.
And the office fee has been set by our executive board at $2.99.
Chris, for the benefit of the public, can you please explain what the service category is?
Services, restaurants, offices, medical facilities. So if you go through Limoneite, that big medical facility down there, that would be service. It's any kind of restaurant. Basically, it's any commercial use that's not industrial, industrial employees can figure out. And then it has to be like Target or something. If you're a wowling, growing a dinner, that's service. We actually look at more shopping centers that are Limoneite, about half of the establishments are service. So things like movie theaters are service. Anyone that sells any kind of food is service. So retail would be Target, Best Buy, Cell phone stores.
Yeah, I have another question. So the way you just explained this, since we're in the program now, this is a resolution that in order to stay in the program, we have to adopt. If we don't adopt it, so, so this new fee schedule is basically a take it or leave it. If we don't adopt it, all the fees that we've paid before are kind of out the window.
Yeah, and of course, that's how the program works. The other issue is because of the sales tax ordinance, so the sales tax measure that was passed in 2003, you're required on a annual basis to certify your RCTC if you're a member of TUMP. And when the ordinance is passed, the language of the ordinance that says you have to pay, you have to be a TUMP maker in your area, not being a TUMP means you no longer can receive a measure A fund from the city from courses.
It makes us pull them off?
Yes, and the city of San Bernardino County, the situation, we can pull off.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Is there any, thank you, is there any, any movement on refining the fee calculation handbook a little bit more to get down in, into the more granular review of some of these projects? And I'll, I'll credit the TUMP program from the perspective of, I think it's, out of all the fee programs we have, is probably the most specific. Ms. Nissen, I mentioned the DIF program and a lot of these are acreage-based versus square-footage-based, which I think is, is much better. You know, if you have like a, a golf course with, you know, one restroom facility or clubhouse, you, you go into the county, and I don't know how we do it exactly here, but some jurisdictions, I mean, you're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for a very small facility, which doesn't seem very equitable and, and they just classify them as residential, commercial, industrial. And as Chris mentioned, there's a wide spectrum of commercial from office uses to your, your Jack-in-the-Box, the Target, and where DIF is just blanket. If you're commercial, you're commercial, you're commercial and it doesn't give a lot of variance. But is there any movement there to try to get a little more equity in the way that the, the fees are calculated?
Yes, so there's two significant efforts we've made. One of which, we've adjusted the calculation of retails. We don't charge TUMPs for $2,000 a fee. Many retailers chose to profit and the reason why is we didn't incorporate the study of shopping centers in Western Riverside County, including the New York Shopping Center of Limoneite. What we found is retail falls into a couple categories. Either it's pretty small or it's really large. So my, my new bare fist shopping is the Nestle, I can use it. I doubt very much even a little cookies goes to drive to a Nestle cookie store just by the business and then leave the shopping center. A lot of these small retail stores can be, can be a trip. So we've adjusted how the fees are calculated. So fee, it's no TUMP fee as he says on the portion about this. The second thing we're currently doing is, is looking at how we calculate the fee on the gas stations. We believe that the fee did not reflect in fact a lot trips, how the gas stations do not sell directly. They stop on the way. And so we've been relying on that. So the next one, we'll, we'll have an updated de-calibration handbook that will include those changes and some other changes we're looking at. And we're always out, we're always open for concrete suggestions. So we're regulating developers, we're regulating the people who have lands and when they bring something to our attention, that they don't feel the de-calibration handbook is addressing. And then we're always, that happens. And if those changes occur a lot, when they table service codes. And when we hear something, we go back there and consider it and if it's appropriate, we push it.
Thank you. I got a quick question, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Platt. Thank you. In that retail center, how many, how many square, how many stores or service providing services that are in that specific shopping center that are under 3,000 square feet? Do we just know a ra, just a figure? Would it be considered, would you say a lot?
I'm sorry?
Would you say that there'd be a lot of?
That are, that are under 3,000 square feet? I, I'm. I, I would be hard to give you a, a true guesstimate, but I would say you've probably got two dozen. At least.
But that's not being charged just on a particular business if they're under 3,000, right? It's when they build the whole thing.
This is, this is when they've very, so let's speak in terms of the Goodman Commerce Center. Okay, they have 45 acres of retail that is going to be developed. They have parcel or spaces that range in square footage from, you know, 1,500 square feet up to 80,000 square feet. Obviously, the smaller tenants that are going into anything 3,000 square feet or less are not going to be paying TUMF at all. Above 3,000 square feet, if I'm understanding you correctly, will be charged the TUMF fee based on what category they're in, whether they're a retail, a service, an industrial, or Class A or Class B office.
I have a question, if it's.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry, just one, one more point of clarification. The fees are paid at the time of certificate of occupancy?
Building, they can also issue a dollar. The other issue is their fees are paid as you go. So your Goodman property from the industrial side, when they come into a building for a.
Correct, so, so Goodman Commerce Center, they won't know specifically what kind of square footage and that someone is, they're not, they're not building it and then, oh, hope, I hope I find someone that will take 1,500 square feet. They have the whole shopping center sort of planned, and they can subdivide room, you know, subdivide different areas or give someone more space or less space depending upon the tenant's needs. And then they come in and go through the process and pull permits, and that's when the fees start coming. So it's not assessed on to Goodman. It would be coming at, at the time that the tenants start to, to make decisions and pull permits. And I apologize.
If you have a property, say, that's 3,100, do you pay on the entire 3,100 or just the 100?
No, you pay on the 100.
Okay.
We, we also found that there are a lot of stores that are 3200, 3500, 3500 in the countywide basis. So there's some under 29. We didn't want to analyze some of these 3,000 and what's 300 versus some of those 2,900.
Yeah, then everybody would be trying to come in at 2990 or something.
What's your cost going to be?
That doesn't matter.
That is self, that is self-equitable.
Exactly.
It's fair.
Thank you.
We ha- we have already received some very positive feedback from our retail partners in the proposed price per square foot for the retail and service categories. And City Hall has actually already issued some refunds.
Councilman Rigby.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I'm not a fan of the residential side being increased. I think that that's going to affect some builders. The next few years, it's going to affect some builders, and it's going to cause projects to be delayed. I'm also definitely not a fan that this is a take it or leave it resolution. And with that being said, I'm disappointed, frustrated that this ties our hands because this makes it so that if we don't approve this, then all the fees that we've paid the last seven years since we've been incorporated are down the drain. So that, that part really frustrates me, and it's kind of hard, it's kind of one of those things that it's, once again, if we don't approve it, then it means that all those fees that we paid are, or that they're all down the drain. I think the fees on retail, commercial, all that stuff, I think they're great. But I think, I mean, we've heard, like Councilmember Rush was saying, our job is, is to look as a protection for the residents in general. It doesn't matter which pot that those fees are coming from, if it's a service provider, if it's TUMF, if it's a city fee. But our job is, is to look at those in general, to look at the total fee that a, that a developer's paying for a resident. I think this is going to affect them in the future, and it's frustrating that it ties our hands.
Could, could you reiterate or go over some of the tangible things that have come about as a result of TUMF that directly affect?
Well, first of all, one of, one thing I want to talk about is what happens if you don't have TUMF? Because you don't have to.
Future projects.
But here's, here's, here's an important perspective. When you don't have TUMF or something like TUMF, you end up in court. You're a developer who ended up in court a lot. Why is that? Because it's very, very hard for you to deal with your C Q O, traffic mitigation, if you don't have a legal program. One of the benefits of TUMF is you don't end up as a developer, basically getting escorted. So if you talk to folks who develop in San Diego County, Orange County, there was a story I read in the paper where a guy was going 100 miles per day to San Diego, and he got sued by Hanheim, and they said, quote, what's the interest? So for the developers, TUMF provides a really tangible advantage. But, you know, let's, let's talk about some projects, you know, Camper Avenue. The Kansas Galleon project, got about 20 million dollars in TUMF. And, and that's $20 million that the city or developer, someone, uh, Schleisman drove. So this was, this was a credit agreement. They developed for both that project in lieu of paying $6 million in TUMF. So instead of having to go out, build that road, and, and when they vote credit agreements, it's because you told them the C Q O condition approval happened on that road. So for the developers, it's huge cost savings, because otherwise, this is what they have to do without TUMF. They have to build a road, and your condition, and then build it. And then perhaps contribute some off-site litigation, or build a road in the valley or Riverside, or the county, and then get those, their obligations. And I would tell you that we are very much interested in funding some projects in these, though. We have additional money coming from the zone, we have money in the bank. We just need your city staff to give us a couple of proposals to do the book. So we're, we're excited to have this city program. It is a program that the city would value a number of, but it's also a radio program, and everyone's ready to deliver. And you decide at some point, does it accept you to be a TUMF? There's a process to leave the show. You don't, you don't do that. You don't, you don't necessarily do that. But I wanted to tell you that there's a lot of benefits that we're seeing.
One of the, the other very tangible benefits that you can see right now is Hamner in front of the Goodman Commerce Center.
What about the Limonite Interchange?
Yes, Limonite Interchange does have the future Limonite Interchange that's coming.
And Hamner Bridge.
Yes, the Hamner Bridge, that's, City of Norco's a lead pro- lead on that project. There's TUMF funds in that. There, I, I know, off the top of my head, I can't recall what the dollar amount is of TUMF funds that are going into the Limonite Interchange. But one of the, the future projects that we've put on WR Cog's radar is a connection of Limonite to Kimball. That is a segment that we, we're not sure how or why it happened, but previous to the city's incorporation, it was not included in the TUMF. And, and we do find that that's a critical east-west connection that we'd like to see made in the near future that also improves the development prospects for Mr. Deitz. Not, not for the benefit of Mr. Deitz, but for the benefit of any future developer. It, it does provide some connectivity, and it also allows to, to alleviate some of the, the impact that we currently see on Schleisman.
Joe, do you have any idea how much of the funding for Limonite Bridge is TUMF money?
Mostly all the funding is from R B B D and from the S B 1, 132. But I believe it's like $2, $3 million, Chris, was taken from, from TUMF, has been allocated for that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one more comment and a question.
Councilman Plon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Rigby. I don't like the fact that, that we're kind of stuck in a situation where there is no alternative option. However, the, the question I have is, is the, is the difference between the single-family residential versus multifamily? I feel that in Eastville, there's not much left of single-family residential that's being, that needs to be developed. Most is developed, but there are areas where multifamily will have to come because of high-density and low-income housing that, that will have to be in the future in order to, to, you know, by, by certain state regulations on that. My question is, in that future, in that perspective, where we do have some multi-housing in the future, and that has to, whether it's low-income or, or high-density housing, will this, the TUMF fees apply to those aspects? Meaning, meaning would it fall under the multifamily residential, in that the, the fee would still be the same?
So the break point between single-family and multifamily is age-old. And historically, it's been, it's been really easy to categorize single-family and multifamily. But what we've seen developers do is you can actually build zero-lot-like homes, or cluster homes, various different kinds of products that Lewis home and some of the other developers that get to that rate going into breaker. And the standard we apply is if it's got more than 81 years breaker, we're considered multifamily. Because those houses tend to be smaller, whether it's a townhouse, a condo, a zero-lot-like single-family house, anything like that. We do have a specific exemption for affordable housing. So if you ever did have a project that qualifies based on the state definition of affordable housing, we're going to take that. Because it's really, because those are projects that you see that are qualified subsidies, and we're going to be ramping up.
I have one question, Eric. How many, how many projects would you say left that is, that are left in Eastville that would be single-family residential and fall in that criteria?
We have, in the above eight units per acre category right now, 60 acres of vacant land.
And if you were to break that up into projects, or, I know that's.
Well, 60 acres, I mean, you'll usually see it come in maybe 10 or 20 acres per project, something like that. So, you know, at eight per acre of 60 acre, that's 500 units. Now, we do need to add more high-density zoning at the 22 and up category. The L E O plan, if that's approved, would have about 22 acres of that in it, and that's 550 units. So we do have more that, that will be coming, just based on vacant land.
Those high-densities wouldn't be affected by this, this fee. It's, right now, it's still the same fee for multifamily.
Right. Now, whether or not they'd be affected, I think what Chris was saying was if they're affordable, they wouldn't cho- they wouldn't pay the fee.
They wouldn't pay the fee at all.
But we don't know until they come in whether they're going to apply for that kind of funding to subsidize and get the rents down.
Thank you, I, I apologize for all the questions, but thank you.
Mr. Endrowan.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add a couple of things here. I know this, Chris has been explaining all the projects that I am to present to you, or before you tonight. Maybe this can be pave the way, make it easier for you to make a decision. But before I say that, a TUMF fee has been around since 2002, 15 years. And Eastvale has benefited quite a bit since the beginning of that, when we were still in the county. So in 2010, we became a city incorporated. We automatically adopted all the county ordinance, including TUMF. And just to share a couple of benefits directly that we're going to see in the future here. Real property has four sites, are in the undeveloped and unwidened, Limonite and Archibald, I'm sorry, Limonite and Hamner. They both are TUMF facilities. And just by having us in the program, the developer of real property is eligible to have the credit and agreement that, to build all those one. And, and the improvements of, of the real property, just public improvements, is going to be quite high. Now, if they enter the agreement, it's going to be helpful for them to be paid a cost, so they don't have to pay the cost of the TUMF for their projects. These are just on the items. The other one is Hamner Avenue widening on the Swan Lake project that the council just approved last year. Actually, last June for the 17, 18 C I P budget. We are adding a lane or two lanes there that we are going to explore away so we can get some kind of funding from, through TUMF credit, because there is a widening that is eligible under TUMF. Hamner is a TUMF facility right now. So right now, the project is about $1 million, 1.2, something like that, that the council approved. With the funding from TUMF, that may also reduce the cost to, to gas tax or other measures that we have budgeted for. So those are the benefits in the, in the foreseeable future that we can see. I just want to share that with the council tonight.
Along the same lines as, as what Joe was saying, I'd like to point out something that's on the flip side. We, we have a project where we are requiring the developer to do a future set aside for a, a large road that is planned to someday connect to Interstate 15, and there is no TUMF credit because that was not, that was removed from the TUMF network. That's something that having, not having that project, that, that future Schleisman Interchange is part of the TUMF network, makes the development of that land very difficult because we're requiring them to do the set aside for a future road that who knows when it's going to be built, and there's no credits for the construction.
Thank you. Is there any speaker cards on this?
We have none.
Any discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, the report is before you, I need to present the report before you on the.
Oh, that's right, we're doing the second one also.
The 7.1? It's going to be real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, actually, thank, thank you, Chris, for providing all the information. So to make it easier, recommendation tonight, actually regarding the ordinance number 17, I don't have the number here, is to update participation in the TUMF program. So basically, to amend the ordinance that previously was approved by the city council. The latest ordinance was 2014 dash 07, and this ordinance before you is the first reading tonight. If you choose to approve this first reading, and it's going to go to second reading in the next meeting. And the second one is adopting a resolution to establish the TUMF, the new TUMF schedule, as you have seen, and, and also part of the report tonight. I'm not going to read all the staff report tonight. I just want to emphasize that these are the recommendations before you if you choose to approve and to vote on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation by staff?
Second.
Councilmember Plon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lorimer will be marked as an abstention. Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 7.2. Can somebody, thank you, sir. 7.2 is going to be a public hearing on the resolution number 17 of the city council and City of Eastvale adopting fees for inspections and related costs in connection with the securing residential single-family properties resulting from illegal marijuana grow house operations, and will presented by City Attorney Kavanaugh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll wait for the mayor Protem to come in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a recommendation that the city council open up the public hearing and adopt resolution number 17 XX, adopting fees for inspections and related costs in connection with securing residential, single-family properties resulting from illegal marijuana grow house operations. As way of background, if you recall, the city council adopted ordinance number 2013 dash 13, which established the single-family residential rental registration, inspection, and crime-free rental housing program, also known as the PROGRAM. That was a program that the council had a zero tolerance for any crime, of, of crime in residential rental housing, and single-family housing. And this was designed to curb some of those issues and provide safe rental programs. On October 16th, or 26th, 2016, the city council adopted regulatory fees to recover the costs associated with the administration of that program, which protects the public health and preserves the welfare of the community. However, since that time, and as the captain will attest, the city has experienced a number of illegal marijuana grow house operations in single-family rental properties, which require the city to expend considerable funds to secure the property from becoming a public safety hazard until such time the property owner is able to correct the substandard conditions resulting from those illegal operations. Typically, under, when a grow house is found out, the city will be notified, the Riverside County. Sheriff's Department, that an illegal marijuana, marijuana grow house has been raided and the illegal operations have been shut down. At that time, both code enforcement and building and safety travel to the subject single-family home to perform the following task in order to secure the property. The property is inspected, photos of the interior and exterior of the home are taken, the property is boarded up and rekeyed in order to secure it from any further entry, either from the property owner or from other people who want to go in there as transients. And then finally, we usually request the title report in order to ascertain the correct property owner with the vested property interest so that communication can be made to that person that their rental property was used as an illegal house, illegal grow house operation. All of these tasks that I just stated require both city staff time and an expenditure of city funds, which at this time were not part of the original regulatory fees adopted by the city council when they were implementing the program. In order for the city to collect these costs from the property owner as a result of the illegal marijuana operations, the city will be required to adopt a resolution approving a fee schedule as a direct cost recovery from the property owner. The proposed fee schedule, which was prepared by both our building and safety department and code enforcement, is based upon an estimated hourly rate calculation, which includes both the building inspector's time as well as the city code enforcement officer's time. Two, it's the board-up rekey costs, which include both time, materials, and locks, the title report, photographs, and the administrative time in both the processing, processing and scheduling of additional inspections as well as clerical costs. The fee schedule is attached to the staff report, is attachment A, which you can read. The attached fee schedule is divided up in two scenarios, namely, those grow houses which are boarded up but have no broken doors or windows, and those grow houses which are boarded up and have at least twenty-five percent broken doors and windows. Each one of those, obviously, the cost is going to be different if you secure the property. When this happens, the property owner is not authorized to re-enter the subject property until such time that that person, that property owner, obtains from the city building and safety department the following permits. One is a permit to rehabilitate the subject property damaged by the illegal marijuana grow house operations, and two, a permit for the subject property electric meter reset. What basically, what that means is, and, and I'm sure the mayor is familiar with this, is what happens in these grow house operations. The electric meter is, is jimmyed wind, it's short-circuited, and they get all the power without actually the meter running and, and being submitted to Southern California innocent. In order for that to be rectified, it's got to be reset. And so, there's a cost involved in resetting that meter. Once those permits have been issued by the city and all cost recovery fees paid pursuant to the fee schedule, the building and safety department will go to the subject property, remove all the locks from that property, in which case, the property owner will be allowed access to start the rehabilitation process. All the costs identified in the exhibit A will be funded by the property owner. No cost to the city would result from both city staff time and materials. At this time, we would ask the city council to consider adopting the resolution with the fee schedule so that the city can recover those costs with these illegal operations. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Couple of questions, mainly time. How, how were these hours derived? There are allocations here of five and a half hours for code enforcement, five and a half hours for the building official, four hours to board up a house. How were these arrived at?
And that's a good question, Mayor Protem. Apparently, the, the, the building official and the code enforcement officer, through the experience of going out to a grow house when called upon, they basically kept track of their time to perform the particular tasks that you articulated, and they basically have kept that time. Now, sometimes that time may go up, sometimes it takes less time, but they're basically saying it's a general time of which to complete every one of those tasks before the house is fully secured. So it is an estimate, but it's based on their prior experience by going out to these, these homes to secure the property. And also, it determines on, on the, the extent of the boarding up that they have to do. If there are broken windows or broken doors, they're going to have to spend more time to secure those and board those up, where if they're not, they won't be. So it's kind of an average time.
So this is though, it is based off of previous experience with similar houses, incidences?
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
This is based on actual time spent previously on similar instances of grow houses?
Yes, and also, the city manager just let me know too, is that when, when we get called by the sheriff's department, it's usually at very, very odd hours, sometimes it's very late at night. So the time that it will take for the building official and the code enforcement officer to come from where they're coming from, that adds on the time as well. So it's not like during the day when they're already at city hall. Many, many times, it's, it's at nighttime, and then we get called, and then they have to react.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Rigby?
Thank you. Thank you for this report. It's a great report. I do have a couple of questions. So these are basically flat fees. So we're charging basically what the fee structure is in the staff report there?
That's correct, sir. It's, it's a flat fee based on an estimate of the hourly time that they use, and then we just put it under a flat fee rate.
So there may be some instances that it's going to take a little bit longer that we're going to have to...
Yes, yes. And that's why it's, it's an estimate, but when you look at it, it's, we try to get as close as we can to a hundred percent cost recovery. It's not always the case, but that's what we try to achieve.
Is there not a way that we can do more of an exact cost recovery of making it saying that we're going to bill you whatever time it takes, rather than having a flat fee set? Or is that more difficult?
It's probably more difficult because it, it all varies on the time that they, they may require. There are some of these tasks that it's, it's pretty dead-on. It's going to, like a title report is going, is going to cost three fifty, four hundred dollars. That's just the way it is. As far as the other times, it depends on where they are at the time, and I think that it, it probably is a burden on both of them to try to keep track of their time each time they do it because of the odd hours, where this is kind of an estimated time. Now, with that said, that doesn't mean that at some point in time, they, we can revisit this to see by experience. Hopefully, we don't get a, a lot of these more later on, but if we do, they're going to get more efficient at it, and that's where maybe we can revisit this and those costs can be reduced because it's, it's got to equal to the cost expended.
I'll be honest, I'm not worried about the cost being reduced. I'm worried about us not covering our costs.
Yeah.
Because I know with some of our, some of the homes in Eastville, you have three, four thousand square foot homes, and if they've converted that over, I've done just brief home inspections. It takes a long time to go through a home. I can only imagine when they have to go through and document everything.
Right.
Five hours is probably pretty generous, especially if you get a three, four thousand square foot home, having to go through that. I'm sure they're, they're a good amount of time.
Well, and, and, and part of it too is because they're, like the building official is, is very good at what to look for. It's just like when they do the inspections for the rental, just the rental understation, they, they become very, very efficient as what to look for with respect to what, what needs to be communicated to the property owner for repairs. And yeah, the five hours is, is, is a pretty accurate time, and then you have the code enforcement officer that has to do with, with he or she's going to do. And then, you know, what, I've been told by the building official that this is pretty much a hundred percent cost recovery.
Okay. I, I do have one more question on the staff report. It says that once the above reference permits have been issued by city and all cost recovery fees paid pursuant to the fee schedule, the building and safety department will remove all locks from the subject property. As I looked at the cost recovery, do we need to add something in there for us going back out and removing? Because I mean, that is an hour or two addition for them to remove...
Oh, I see what you mean.
To remove the, to switch out the locks again, is there an additional expense that we're going to incur that we can pass on to the homeowner?
You know, do they just give the key to them? I, I think they just give the key to them.
Right. We, we typically give the key to the homeowner, and then they can, they can have it rekeyed at their own expense.
Okay. I was just thinking, if we were going out there and switching it out, I don't want us doing that on our dime.
It was my understanding that they, once they pay all the fees and the permits are issued, they give them the key and say, okay, now go for it.
Question? Councilor Rush?
Thank you. I'm, I'm curious on the, the logistics of how we're going to recover our, our cost recovery fees. Is this more of just a schedule so that we can legally charge them and, and it'll be part of the normal code enforcement process, or does someone actually come in, fill out an application, go through the building permit process, and these are assessed at that time?
And that's a good question. These, this is not part of the code enforcement recovery program. This is going to be specific to these operations. When building and safety gets in touch with the property owner, because typically, they will come in and say, I can't get into my house, the building and safety department will say, okay, in order for this to happen, you've got to secure this permit and pay these fees. Once, once that's done, those are paid upfront so that we get, we get those costs recovered, and then when those permits are issued, the, the key is given to them to go back into accessible. So we don't pay, we don't collect those fees. At some point in time later, we get them right upfront.
Okay. Good. No further questions?
That was pretty much my question. Mayor Protem?
Quick follow-up. Are, are these, if, this will be blanket in nature, this fee, if there is a grow house found, these will be the fees that are charged?
Yes.
Okay. And do, what are, I don't know if you know this, but maybe somebody does, what are the average costs associated with rehabilitation of a grow house that has been found?
Councilmember Lorimer, excuse me, Mayor Protem Lorimer, it really depends upon the extent of damage. Some of the properties that I have toured are, are extensive. There's mold everywhere, walls have been removed, ceilings have been removed. There's been a lot of illegal modifications, structural modifications that compromise the, the integrity of the home. It's, and we've seen it all. We've seen, you know, fake little rooms built that make it look like there's lights going on and off. So it just depends on how extensive the damage is to the property. We've also had properties where there was a fire. So it's hard to say. It, it's not a small chunk of change, and I know some of the homeowners are going through insurance for their recovery.
I guess a, part of this, where I'm coming from on this, I, to have somebody that is an absentee landlord, I can absolutely see this, yes, for sure. If there is somebody that is doing their, that they did a review of the tenant before coming in, looked legit to them, and then it goes sideways, they end up getting, they have to pay for tens of thousands of dollars to rehabilitate the inside of their house, then the city comes in, and I'm all for cost recovery, but then the city comes in and says, before you can even get to that, you have to pay another twenty-five hundred bucks. It, it just seems like insult, adding insult to injury for me, for somebody that's really trying to do better for their family, have that extra little bit of money coming in from rent, if they even make any money on that house. So that, that's where I'm coming from on this, so that's my question.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Lorimer, to that point, if I could add, based on the trends that we see on the grow houses that we have experienced with the title reports that the city attorney's office has run, these are ninety-eight percent of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, absentee landlords that do not even reside in this country. So it, it, there's, there's oftentimes a, a delay in getting to the property owner. I would say it's a, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of these are not registered as part of the rental registration program. They did not go through our process to begin with. So the, I, I understand your concern about it being a burden to, to someone who's trying to do the right thing and who's, who's, you know, trying to provide for their family, but that doesn't appear to be the case with some of these homeowners. They're, they're not taking pride in ownership. They are not invested in our community. They are not making an effort to build a neighborhood. They're, they're, they're trying to couch money in, in, in this investment, and they're not paying attention.
And I totally understand your concern, Mayor Protem, and it is salt to the wound of, of someone that may have to come in and now, if their insurance is going to deny it, they may have to put up fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars on top of these other fees. My thought is, is that's them neglecting their investment. There are ways, there's a real estate professional here in the audience that I'm sure deals with property management. There are ways that property owners can take care of their investment and not neglect it by asking someone, a real estate professional, to help assist with that. I think this cost recovery fee is a cost recovery fee that they need to think about if they're going to allow their property to be neglected or not. I don't think it should be, we let their property be neglected as well as now we have to pay for the cost of their neglect.
And, and if I may add, if you do not have this program in place, then our general fund bears this burden. And, and I don't think that that is, we have, we have other priorities in which you could spend this money and, and not be funding, for lack of, of having a, a precise cost recovery method, we, in, in a manner, are funding this type of activity. And, and from my perspective, I would like to see it as uncomfortable as possible to do this type of business here in the city of Eastvale. And one of the ways to make that perfectly clear is to hit people, hit these growers where it hurts, which is in the pocketbook, and, and that's the responsibility of, of owning a rental property in this community, that you take care of it, that you know what's going on inside your home, that you engage a professional, as Councilmember Rigby has pointed out, and, and make the investment in the community to stay on top of your property.
I'm assuming this would be something that would be presented to people that come in to do their rental registration or...
The rental registration is an ongoing effort.
Right, but they would also, if they do it, they'd be presented with this so that they're aware, hey, if your house becomes a grow house due to your, your lack of attention, this is what you'll be subject to.
Oh, I, I see your point. We would be happy to include that.
Yeah. Yeah, it could act as a deterrent as well. And they, my other question is, on the other end of the spectrum, if somebody maybe has a small operation that takes place at their rental property and they want to dispute these fees because they feel it was significantly less, is there an appeals process available to them?
We do have an appeal process that's built into our municipal code, Mr. Mayor, so that's available. Going, one point that we do do too is a, as a, as a reminder to, there are absentee property owners, and many, many times, many times, they come into city hall and they had no idea that their rental property was a grow house. So as Mayor Protem has indicated, they're, they're very shocked, they feel very, very embarrassed about it. But one of the things that we do do, and we'll, we'll make the amendment that you're talking about, but we do send a letter out. After we find, get the title property, we send a letter out to the property owner saying that you got one, you had one bite of the apple, and if you allow your property again to be a grow house, then we will go to court, in which case, you won't be able to rent that property out for a year. And, and I think it's worked because none of these grow houses have been repeat offenders.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any speaker cards?
We've received none.
Any other discussion or, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved with the, with the amendment to add that to the rental registration.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
No.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four-one.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to, uh, council business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, point of order. I need to leave. My daughter's really sick. Someone needs to take her to urgent care. So I apologize. Um, and I'm sorry, Eric, can we push our general plan update to our next meeting? If you don't mind, if, if that's okay with the council side. I'm a, I'm a geek, I'd like to hear.
I'll agree with that.
Okay. You apologize. I'm gonna try to sneak out of here as quietly as possible.
Yeah, we'll move on to, to eight point two, new communication specialist position job description proposal and additional addition to salary schedule. Mr. Cepeda.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The staff report before you is a recommendation to approve the communication specialist's job description and to adopt the resolution to amend the salary schedule to reflect the new classification. The classification was included in the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen budget, however, was not yet reflected in the approved salary schedule. No additional cost will be associated with this position. The salary survey was conducted with surrounding cities to compare the new classification as it was determined that the salary range for the position be established at a range seven. With the new job description prepared and the salary range established, the city will commence recruitment for this new position immediately upon city council approval. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Did we get any speaker cards?
We've received none.
All right. Any discussion on this? Or I'll, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
All right, we'll move on to item eight point four, public works traffic update. Mr. Enderwan.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and council members. Um, we normally bring public works update to, um, the council every month, at the second meeting of the month. And it was just a general update on the projects, commercial, residential development, CIP permits. Tonight, we have a, a special, uh, presentation. Just want to share with the council on the specific projects that the staff feels this would be of the interest of the city council. We call this public works traffic update. Um, mostly, uh, some of the new programs that we just, uh, launched and also an update on some of the CIP projects that has occurred in the past. Um, let me start here. This presentation is gonna be really cool. Um... All right, all right, let me go back a little bit here. So, uh, the first project we have is, uh, is a public works maintenance program. Uh, normally, um, as, um, has been shared earlier, that we do have e-citizens, um, apps that we have in the city hall and that the citizens can report to us, complain or concerns. And, um, as soon as reported, uh, we're gonna receive email and we're gonna react and they're gonna respond to the concerns. Um, this is a more proactive program, just about in July. Uh, staff was challenged by city manager to, to improve the maintenance and, uh, to be more proactive with the situation that we have in the city and throughout the city. So, um, after thinking about it and we, uh, decided, the staff proposed this, uh, to the city manager and we divided the city into four zones. And each of these zones, um, are approximately the same amount of street miles and the number of homes and stuff. So what we tried to do is every week, uh, uh, our public works contract, which is MCE Development, would go to this zone. They would go around, drive around the city streets to check what sidewalk, there's a tripping hazard or so, um, whatever, and there is a sign get covered by the, a tree branches. Uh, there is a striping that got faded away, there's a crack and pothole in the streets, weeds growing between the, uh, gutter and the pavement, all those things. This is the routine maintenance that we're gonna go around and around. And now, if the situation is small, smaller like weeds, they would go out to their trucks, they would completely remove the weeds and then spray roundups. But if the situation is more like the, um, traffic hazard, uh, I'm sorry, trip hazard on the sidewalk, they'd make a note, they would put in their system for future, um, for future maintenance and repair. And, um, we also have, um, um, uh, partner agencies that will be responsible for, for example, like landscaping trees and, um, weeds in the, um, in the, um, major, uh, parkways or the major streets. We're gonna report those to L-GCSD, just for examples. So this has been going on for about two months and then we're gonna review this, uh, how effective it is going to be, how, um, uh, we can improve this and by, by adding more items to, to the system. So, um, this is very, very good and, um, we report to the council tonight that it has actually been pretty, uh, pretty successful so far. So, uh, the second projects that we have, yes?
Joe, I don't mean to interrupt you, but for the benefit of the public, I'd like to clarify that that is for public in public areas. This is not, um, the city cutting trees on private property. This is not the city, uh, clearing out weeds in someone's driveway. This is, you know, this is only the areas that are, uh, public domain, yeah, sorry, we're not gonna take on trimming of trees for private, private persons. So this is strictly, strictly, uh, public property.
Thank you, Zino.
Yeah, thank you for clarification, city manager Neeson. Okay, so the second item we have is, um, enhanced crosswalks. Uh, they call it triple four. This is the new standard, it's been approved by Caltrans about like five years ago, MUTCD approved this. We use, um, uh, not paint, we use thermoplastic to, for long-lasting. And, and we leave, uh, the middle portion open, um, for strollers, um, for kids with bikes, uh, so they don't have to go through, um, the thermoplastic that is, uh, smoother than, than the rest of the street. So they call it triple four. And we're trying to, um, hit the school areas first. For example, Scholarway, Citrus, Whispering Hills, um, you know, um, Harrison, all those areas. And the way we do this is we're trying to include this in our, uh, other street projects. Uh, we have, um, the council awarded, uh, slowly sealed project, um, um, just about two, three meetings ago. And we included about eleven or twelve crosswalks, intersections into the crosswalk. So, um, when the council would see all this, then, uh, residents would see the neighborhood gets slurry, we will see in the school areas, we have all these new crosswalks painted yellow and mostly in the, quote-unquote, safe to route, safe to school route, um, uh, areas. And eventually, uh, after the school areas are hit, we're going to continue and expand, uh, on bigger areas. We have identified so far about forty-five to fifty, uh, intersections that are very, very critical, uh, that we're going to hit this fiscal year. And this is an enhancement that we do and, um, we want to provide this for our community, especially in the schools, uh, zone, school areas. The next project we have is a, a school program, um, especially in certain areas like, um, Citrus and Scholar and Whispering Hill, Harrison. There's always, there's always issues, especially when you have multiple schools in one locations. And, um, we, uh, are having a, a more proactive program now. Um, we want to have a meeting like two months before school starts, say in the summer, before, um, uh, September or August. Two months prior to that, we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna visit school sites, we're gonna check signs, make sure the signs are clear and, 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 and make sure the stripings are all fresh and, um, the sidewalks are, are cool. And the whole thing has to be, we will review that. This is a school program, we just, um, trying to, um, uh, we're trying to promote again, uh, with our, uh, public works and traffic team so we can provide the best, uh, condition possible. And also during the first day of school, we normally would send two people to, uh, Citrus, um, and, and Scholarway area and also the other two people to Rosa Parks and Harrison to watch the traffic behavior, uh, how, how it goes. So we can see if there's some improvements we, we can do. The next one that we have here is a radar speed signs. We have installed ten of them around the school areas and two more, one on Limonite, one on Sliceman. We are still fine-tuning this. Uh, we thought we got everything done until, um, I just recently got, um, a little tap on the back by city manager, say, hey, I came home on Saturday night and it still slowed down school, school traffic twenty-five miles an hour. So we continue to, we continue to fine-tune this. And the good thing about this is that this is all solar, no electricity. We can move this, we don't like to move it, uh, different location, but we can move it if necessary. Uh, it's gonna cost money because of the footings. But we can also access this through, uh, tablets, to iPhone, to smartphones. So if we have to make some adjustment, so for example, um, sheriff department or the state would increase the fine to like seven hundred dollars for speeding, we're gonna put that in there. So people, when they speed, they will see that, hey, you're gonna get hit by seven hundred. I'm just hypothetical here. So we, we can message this any way we want. We can turn off the display but still recording the speed. We can download the speed and give the speed to, um, the, the results of our, um, sheriff department for enforcement on certain time. Um, it's very versatile and, and, um, we have, uh, received quite a good feedbacks in this. Oh, by the way, I just wanna share also, uh, that, um, we have received eighty-four thousand dollars funding from Beyond Grant. We spent about twenty-three thousand from our own money. Uh, this is the Beyond Grant through WRCOG, um, the funding for this par- speed radar sign. Those are the location, I know it's kinda small, but, um, if you drive around town, the school area especially, you would notice that.
Joe, the additional funds that we spent that did not come out of general fund, correct?
Did not come, right. It's a, it's a gas tax and measure A, or measure A, yes. Thank you. The next project we'd like to share tonight with you is, um, Hamner Avenue Waddington Project, we wanna just share earlier. Um, it's under design. The council approved, um, this project, um, affronting Swan Lake, um, at this fiscal seventeen eighteen. We're designing this, um, um, we are trying to put, um, um, the accelerator on this project because, um, sometime in June of next year, Limonite and I-15 Bridge gonna start. When that starts, Hamner is going to be used as a detour. So we want to really make sure that we are ready for, uh, for that time, at that time. And the beauty of this project again about this, um, uh, TUMP fee, this is a TUMP facilities. So, uh, it is true, the council approved the budget of, um, a gas tax at measure A or SB one for this, but, um, we can also request reimbursements from WRCOG as part of TUMP because it is a TUMP credit area. The next one we have here is, um, the favorite of the city council, Peach Blossom Court. And we have, uh, we have this, um, staff came to the council, presented about three months ago because of speeding concerns and speeding complaints. This is actually a local street that's been used to, uh, have a shortcut between, um, Sixty-Fifth and Scholar. So, um, this area recently has been chosen for the slowly sealed project, it's gonna come up in the next few months. And staff was thinking about what is the best way to handle this. At that time, the council said, take some baby steps. Uh, people wanted to have more drastic measures. So what we do here is, I know it's not very clear here, what we're trying to do is trying to put the solid yellow, double solid yellow, all the way at the center line from Sixty-Fifth to, um, to Scholarway. And then we're gonna also put the stencil twenty-five miles, um, on the pavement, both directions. Uh, we're gonna put slow twenty-five and we're gonna put signs on the posts on each side, uh, of the street on both directions as well. And, um, uh, staff believe this is going to really, um, provide information and also awareness of the, of the commuters that mostly maybe not from this area, just wanna have a shortcut. And, uh, this is just some of the details we have. This is a before and after, and the segments. We're gonna add those yellow, um, double yellows all the way through. And, um, before I go here, um, this project is gonna be part of slowly seal. And after this was awarded, um, again, um, Michelle Neeson, city manager Neeson, uh, reminded me of this other project that we have, celebrations. Um, this is between Hamner and Homecoming. We have, uh, received a lot of complaints in this area and a year or two ago, we met with the communities. And I don't know if Ms. Hamdi is here tonight or not, but she's not, and, um, I've contacted her. So anyway, people come, um, um, as soon as they leave, um, Homecoming gate right here, um, they would speed all the way to the community until they hit the knuckle, slow down a little bit, and maybe speed again all the way to Hamner, the other way around too, vice versa. So, um, eh, many, um, measures have been requested and, and, and suggested. And when all this double yellow striping for Peach Blossom occurred, staff would feel like this is maybe another candidate, good candidate for us to add. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna add the double yellow and the twenty-five, um, mile an hour sign on the pavement and on the post, uh, um, on both directions. And upon sharing this with Ms. Ramdi, uh, Ms. Raina Hamdi, she was excited to hear. And staff is schedule, scheduling a meeting with the neighborhood to share about, uh, what we're gonna do here in this area. Those are the, um, uh, sharing that, uh, I have tonight and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you, if you have some.
I just have a couple of quick things just regarding these projects and striping. I know that, uh, I briefly mentioned, I think to Joe Yu and, uh, city manager about outside of Smart and Final on Sumner. If, as we're looking at striping and slowly seal, if we can look at that because, um, hopefully Captain Hedge will, and Lieutenant Martin will plug their ears on this right now. But as it currently stands, it's double yellow on both sides. So it acts as a median. So you can't legally turn into Smart and Final off of Sumner going south right now.
Right.
You didn't hear that, Captain Hedge?
Yeah.
Um, but people have, have mentioned that to me that, hey, you know, technically it's illegal. So I don't know if that's another project that we can visit?
Actually, that's one really, this is, uh, something that's, is being done right now by the, by the, um, developer. If you can see, they, they slowly seal Limonite, the next one is gonna slowly seal Sumner. And the, the striping is gonna be part of that to, to provide illegal, uh, to provide legal, uh, movements.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Joe, thank you. Thank you, staff. This, I'm actually really excited about all the, the technology that we're using for the, the traffic signs. Thank you again on Peach Blossom. I know, you've listened to a lot of the residents and thanking you guys for taking action on that and taking those baby steps. So thank you very much for responding to a lot of those residents. I know they'll appreciate that and I'll make sure that the word gets out to those, those people in the heartlands that were kinda, that are kinda affected by it. So thank you very much.
Is this a, are we taking action on this or is this?
Just a receiving file, Mr. Mayor?
Receiving file.
A motion for receiving file.
I'll move it.
Second.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
All right, we'll move on to Mr. Enderwan again for eight point five, public improvements agreement for the ninety-nine cent only store, northeast corner of Hamner Avenue and Sliceman Road. Project number is thirteen dash one six zero one.
Good evening again. Um, this project is nineteen-nine cent store is being built. If you can see, the building is up right now. There is a slight, uh, issue that they have, uh, um, that is being corrected right now. But before you tonight is, um, um, an item, uh, for the council to approve. When the, when nineteen-nine cent store was approved by planning commission, um, back in, um, I have to look here, in two thousand fifteen, um, there's a major, major development review. Um, the project was conditioned to widen Hamner Avenue, the frontage of the, um, nineteen-nine cent store in the, in its entirety, even though it builds only, uh, the southerly half. And, um, normally when we have subdivision, that this automatically part of the subdivision agreement with, with, um, with the map. But, um, at this point, nineteen-nine cent store chose not to file a map. Um, so this public improvement agreement is just, um, similar to the subdivision agreement but non-subdivision map. So, um, we have, um, uh, city council, I'm sorry, city attorney has, um, reviewed the public improvement agreements. And, um, nineteen-nine cent store has, um, agreed to bond for the improvements. And it's including widening of the street, sidewalk, curb and gutter, uh, sewer and water, and also improving some of the, a portion on, on, on the Sliceman Road and traffic signal and so on. Uh, before you tonight is a public improvement agreement, it's just a normal process for, um, the city to go through a development project. Um, and, um, the recommendation- go through a development project. And the recommendation is for the council to approve the agreement and to authorize City Manager to execute necessary documents. Representative for Ninety-Ninth Cent Store, I believe you are still here, Mr. Jesse Allen and Mr. Will Judy, if you have any question. But other than that, staff, I'll be happy to ask any questions you may have.
Mayor Protim?
Yeah, thank you. So Claire, just to make sure I understood you correctly, we are going to be seeing the road widened up to the fire station?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's included here. When will that be done?
Oh, actually, they have been bugging me for the permit. And but now we're waiting for the improvement agreement to be, to be completed then. They're ready for, for the public improvements.
Okay, what's the timeline approximately?
For the public improvements? I would say they're gonna start within the next thirty days, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Judy?
Excellent. Good, very good. I, whenever I'm going down that road, you know, there's always that bottleneck there. So I think a lot of residents will be happy with that and excited about the store coming in. Okay, then I think you understand. Also, I think they're gonna be excited about the, they are excited about Ninety-Ninth Cent Store coming in. Do we have a date for opening of the store? Approximately?
Sally, do you like to respond to that?
If you can come to the podium and use the microphone, just, we record the meetings.
Yes, Jesse Allen, Senior Vice President of General State and Ninety-Ninth Cent Store resident. We are looking to open the store at, at December, early January. So once we get started, see if we want anything, but our plans either done by end of our fiscal year, which is January, which is part of our plan to have it done this year, this year as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have any comment cards?
We've received none.
All right. I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lorrimore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Excellent. All right, we'll move on to item nine. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item nine, City Manager and Staff Reports.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Yes, I'll make this short. I kind of shared some of this earlier with you, but today I met with HDL regarding our property tax. And I'm pleased to report that the City of Eastvale has experienced a net taxable value increase of seven-point-one percent for two thousand seventeen eighteen tax roll. The assessed valuation between two thousand sixteen seventeen and two thousand seventeen eighteen, the increase was five hundred and ninety-eight million dollars. Countywide, the percentage increase was only five-point-two percent. So again, we're outpacing the rest of the county in our valuation increase. The median home price for a single-family, a detached single-family resident and residents in Eastvale is now five hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Again, that's a seven-point-two percent increase from two thousand and sixteen prices. And I will place a copy of this in your boxes in case you wanna read it on it any further.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Joe?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, just want to report that a meeting has been scheduled for Thursday of next week at one P.M. It's a joint meeting between Rosa Parks and Algu Ramirez. Thanks to Lieutenant Martin, who have been scheduling this. There's some traffic concerns on Whispering Hills, Running Iron and Harrison. So in the past, I've met with the school principals and Mrs. Steve Ellis, the school district. And now we're gonna meet again to hear what the concerns are, to see how we can help to address the issues. And Councilman Rigby, I have sent an invite to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just very briefly, in your package tonight, you have our monthly status report. And if you had a chance to look at that, you'll see it's entirely new and revamped. Has a new format. It's got color in it. Every project now has an aerial with a map on it, so you can see where they are. And you have to flip to the back and find the map. As always, all the new stuff in that report is highlighted in yellow. So you don't have to read the whole thing. Just look at the yellow parts, and that's the new stuff. And we added a current status field in every project, so you can easily see what's been approved and what's still in the process without having to hunt through the notes. So we've got some more ideas that we'll be rolling out as we continue to improve that. But I hope you enjoy that new format. And we, of course, put that on our website, so that's something out there that developers and residents and so on can look at and wish they could put their best foot forward. A couple other brief things. If you haven't had a chance to go out to the Goodman Commerce Center, the pedestrian bridge over Goodman Way is well under construction. I was out there this morning and took some pictures. Aleah's gonna post us on social media tomorrow. So if you're following our Twitter and Instagram, which I hope you all are, you'll see those out there tomorrow. On Monday, they came out and craned in two hundred-and-ten-foot-long metal girders that spanned the entire road in a single throw. So those are out there now, and they're starting to assemble the bridge on top of that. But it's very exciting stuff. Also, at the Goodman Commerce Center, we're expecting to get construction plans for the Costco store in next week for Plan Check, which is a major step. They're expecting, it's gonna take us a few months to get the Plan Check comments back and get through that process. We're gonna surprise them that it's not gonna take nearly that long. We wanna get that under construction as soon as we can, get them open and generating sales and sales tax for us. And that's our direction from Michelle, and we're gonna follow through on that. Goodman is gonna build much more commercial around the Costco. Having the Costco under construction is really gonna jumpstart all of that stuff. That's what everybody's been waiting for. Goodman is building three commercial buildings themselves, themselves. The rest of it will be ground leased, and people will build their own buildings. But the three Goodman buildings should be under construction with the Costco. So you'll be seeing all that stuff starting to come out of the ground, you know, hopefully very shortly. And that's about it. A lot of exciting stuff happening out there.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have any other signed lease agreements that could be mentioned?
Hmm, not at this time.
Okay.
He tried.
Well, not in the retail. Not in the retail component.
Okay.
The, the last unit.
And that's what I meant.
Yeah, last unit in the, of the business park, the small spaces, that has been leased out, sixteen-hundred square feet to Dr. Chang.
What kind of doctor?
Dentist. And he has signed a very long lease, ten, ten years, ten years with a ten-year extension.
Nice.
So he's committed.
Yeah, actually, that multi-tenant space on the Hamner Furniture has been so successful for them. They're gonna extend that northward with more of that in their next phase of construction. So that, that's been a, a great boon for them. And there's, most of those businesses are local Eastvale residents, the CrossFit, which is already out there, the Realtor, the Learning Center. These are all Eastvale people. So it's been a great, great boon for us.
Awesome. Good news. That's right. Any other staff reports?
Yes, I have one on behalf of Public Information. Community cleanup this Saturday, nine-thirty, September thirtieth, I apologize. September thirtieth, eight to twelve, at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. We just posted before the council meeting, the new event route, so people know the ingress and egress and where the event's gonna take place. Interested to see how this will work at Roosevelt as opposed to Ramirez. International Walk to School Day is on October fourth. I think I have two council members that are signed up to participate. If the other two or three would like to, just let me know, and I can assign you a location. The Fall Festival, not the Harvest Festival, the Fall Festival is actually October seventh this year, hosted by J C S D. And lastly, our CERT class for October thirteenth through fifteenth was full. So I called the county to increase participation and registrants in light of last night's presentation. And as I was reported today, it's already at forty-five participants. So that's a very good thing for Eastvale.
So they did, they expanded?
I made the request that they expanded because a lot of times you'll get thirty-five registered and twenty show up. So our last class, we had almost thirty registered and twelve showed up. So I-
Are you at max registration right now?
We went over max registration. I was kind of allocating for potentially people not showing up, so that we could at least have that full class.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Councilmember Plot, you look like you have a question.
It was very, you was very personal. Do you have me signed up for that walk? Because I have, I accepted it, but you have me signed up on that? Who are the councilmen that are coming to the-
I have Mayor Tesari and Councilmember Rigby.
Yeah, I, I accepted it. You can count me in.
And Councilmember Plot.
Thank you. What school you sign it? You sign it? Whatever school's available, you can let me.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank city staff for an outstanding Public Safety Commission meeting last night. I was not in attendance, but to brag on city staff, particularly Aleah, that's the largest turnout we've ever had, with ninety-three people in, that attended the meeting. I'd also like to thank Don Pedinger, our community hero for the City of Eastvale. He was nominated at the L.A. County Fair. And again, his participation in helping us promote last night's Public Safety Commission meeting, I'm sure, brought in a few more people through the door than we normally have. So I really appreciate Aleah's efforts and her knowledge and expertise. It was very timely subject matter related to emergency preparedness. And, and thank you to Joe for your extensive presentation and for putting up with me, constantly asking. So it was a great job last night to everyone. I've had a lot of positive feedback, particularly from Commissioners DeCosta and Perilla.
I also received positive feedback.
Outstanding.
Aleah did a good job, yeah.
That's what we like to hear.
I was present for that meeting. And, yeah, like, if you ever needed an M.C. in an event, for an Eastvale event, you need to hire anybody, it's Aleah. She got it, she got it down. She did a fantastic job, so.
Yes, thank you very much, Aleah.
All right. No other staff comments? Move on to council. Anybody? Nobody has anything?
I have a couple of things. Sorry. Okay. Just a couple of things. Great job on the staff reports. There's some awesome things going on. Yes, I saw the revised planning update. I think it's awesome how it's presented. Great job. With that being said, Mayor Protim and the mayor and I had the opportunity last night to attend a Boy Scouts of America recognition for our city manager that was recognized by the local council and local district as a distinguished citizen. So congratulations to our city manager for all that she's done. It was, it was a great event. So, so thank you. Thank you for, for that leadership and that. But a couple of just quick updates. I attended recently Harupa, the Harupa School District has just announced their new academy school, the Del Sol Academy. So I attended their open house recently, met the principal there. Yes, it's Harupa School District. They do have a part of Eastvale there. I think it's gonna be another great academy. It's gonna be very similar to the STEM Academy, but it's K through eight, unlike our STEM Academy that's focused on high school. So it's a, it's a great addition to the community there. The residents there are very excited. We had an ad hoc committee meeting for the short-term rental ad hoc committee. That committee is no longer together. I don't know the proper way to say that. I don't know if there's anything-
Dissolved.
Yeah, I guess we're, we're no longer, we're no longer meeting right now. So that, that committee's basically dissolved. And, and the reason for that is, is because when it was an ad hoc committee, a short term, but then also we have seen a lot of progress. We are still staying in communication, so it's not something that we are just vacating and, and letting it go. We are staying in communication with all the stakeholders, specifically being the Enclave HOA, the two resident members that we had on there, Lewis Apartments, who is very involved with that, because they have the Homecoming, and there was a large presence there. All of these areas have reported a significant decrease in the, one of their main focuses was the birthing homes. So we have seen a significant decrease in those. We're continuing to, to work with them and see that. But the ad hoc committee is no longer needed and no longer will be meeting. We did have a Parks Commission meeting, if it's all right if I just share a few things. And if Councilmember Plot has anything in addition to share with that real quick. There were two issues that, that I brought up. One was there was a security contract that was issued that we, that I briefly mentioned that I was gonna bring it up. Last city council meeting, I did bring it up, asked them as a courtesy if they could let the commission know. We were told that that's not up to us, that we don't need to know about that stuff, that that's an operation decision that can be made by them without letting the commission know. I did just ask for communication in the future. Not sure that that will happen. One of the other issues that I did bring up was landscape maintenance, specifically in the parks and the right-of-ways. And the response to that was more or less that they weren't aware of this, that no residents have complained. My response to that was I didn't feel that residents needed to complain about maintenance being done. Going back to Joe's report up here, I was very impressed. One of the key words there is proactive. I'm so grateful that you're taking a proactive approach to this. It really shows. And again, I'm grateful for that. I hope that we can see that proactivity throughout the whole city. But I, I think there's just a lack of communication. We're continuing to work on that lack of communication, which leads me to my last point regarding the lighting issue that we're still in process with. I think we're, we're still working some things out with there. I would like to see an agenda item from city staff on an update on this, please, as soon as possible. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rigby. Anybody else? Councilmember Plot?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add, I haven't said one of the Parks Commission, they pretty much hit it all on that. But in regards to the, the short-term tenancy ad hoc committee, one thing I wanted to bring up was, yeah, we're gonna continue, at least having follow-up calls with the different stakeholders. And we're not just gonna singularly just stop what we're doing, but we'll continue to reach out. But, you know, to kind of talk about what that Council Rigby had said, it's extremely effective. And I think we gained some good results out of it. One thing I wanted to add to it, though, is that we said that we were gonna make changes to the rental registration agreement, or at least bring that up, and to look to add language to prohibit advertising, you know, such as, why am I losing the train of thought here?
Airbnb.
Airbnb, and there was the other one. But so I just wanted to make sure that we're kind of in the talks of that and bringing that up. And then we were gonna try to simulate some language that maybe the Enclave HOA had in their bylaws, that they're having some that's kind of created, that way we can emulate something within our purview. So just wanted to, maybe somehow we can bring that to council, that's probably needed at some point.
Yes, I will follow up with the Enclave HOA on the documents that they're gonna share with us and provide those to the city attorney for consideration.
Thank you. I have no further comments.
Mayor Protim Lorrimore? Thank you. The mayor and myself, we're not able to be here at the last council meeting because we were up in Sacramento on city business with the League of California Cities. The, while we were up there, it's the General Assembly, takes place once a year. It moves around the state. This time it was in Sacramento. In that it was in Sacramento, it was fortuitous in that it allowed myself and the mayor and Adam, Councilmember Rush came up the next day. So there was quorum. So we were, we were able to have the meeting, but Councilmember Rush came up the next day. But we were advocating against the passage of legislation. It was the end of session, that last council meeting, the last week for legislation to pass. And we reached out to our assemblywoman and, in relation to SB six forty-nine, we've made, and that has to do with the not-so-small cellphone towers that will be allowed to be put up around the city without city input, wherever they like, and the telecommunications firms. And we have been, we've been very vocal about this issue. We have let it be known. I've flown up to Sacramento and spoken, went to committee on this and spoke against this, or attempted to, but our assemblywoman didn't show up in time to that meeting. Anyway, and I had to catch a flight back. But it was fortuitous that we were there. We were able to advocate against this. It was the largest turnout that the League of California Cities has had, I believe- It was the largest turnout that the League of California Cities has had, I believe, ever. Thousand, 2,000-plus elected officials from around the state came in. There was a lot of educational opportunities in terms of teaching seminars. So it was a, it was, it was a good opportunity made for very long days, but took place, and that's why we weren't here for the last council meeting. And we really tried to make sure that I'm here, I believe all of us do. And when I miss a council meeting, it's because I'm doing something else for the city. So, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, I think we, we were successful, correct me if I'm wrong, in getting an extent, an abstention from Senator Roth.
Correct.
Which was, that was a win for us, but unfortunately, it didn't really matter, but-
There, there is hope that the governor will veto this bill. That's the hope, and there is, it's being bandied about that that's a distinct possibility. So we'll see, hopefully.
I just want to remind everybody, our next meeting is October 11th, same time, same place, and we're going to recess to, would you like to add something before we go into closed session? All right.
Yeah, yes, sir. With regards to the veto proposal or hopes, do I have the authority to send a veto letter on behalf of the City of Eastvale to Governor Brown related to SB 649?
Yes, and may I request that we also get that on social media and any, any way that we can get it out to our residents also?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
We will be going to closed session, item 11.1, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation.